Okay. Okay, as soon as it starts six, I'll tell them. Correct name there, Chris? Okay, I just, Stella, I just admitted Letty also. So it looks like all your people are here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, it's 6:00 PM, so we're ready to start.
All this meeting in order for February 23rd, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Richard Boss.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Varden.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin.
Present.
City Manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City Attorney Patricia Bengloche.
Here.
And the deputy clerk is present. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Teresa. We'll move on to the invocation which will be given by Commissioner Payne and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mr. McDonald. If everyone would please stand for the prayer and also remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I'm going to apologize for not standing, but please join me in prayer. Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for this day, Lord. We thank you for another day that we can serve our city, Lord, and do the business of the city, Lord. We pray that you would just continue to watch over our city, Lord, bless our business owners, Lord, bless our citizens, Lord, and bless this time, and we ask us all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Move on to approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Commissioner Baldwin.
You can find me in all those thumbnails.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Reddick, second. We have a vote. All those in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We want to presentations, presentation for the Alamo Gordo Police Department Mobile Crisis Response Team and Crisis Intervention Calls. We have our chief Denton with us this evening and Jeanette, I'm sorry, Berunda, the Mobile Crisis Response Team clinician. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome for a minute.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Boss. Good evening, commissioners, and good evening. Brian Caesar, thank you for having us here for this presentation this evening. My name is Jeanette Berunda. I am the CIT Clinical Director for the Mobile Crisis Response Team at the Alamo Gordo Police Department. So we are going to discuss CIT Crisis Intervention Team and the need for Mobile Crisis Response Team and what we've done here in the city of Alamo Gordo thus far. Crisis Intervention Team, or CIT, is a model that's known as the Memphis Model. It was developed in 1988 in Memphis, Tennessee, as a result of a gentleman with a mental health issue who was, had an altercation with police and ended up dying as a result of that incident. The National Alliance of Mental Illness, or NAMI, and the Memphis Police Department got together and said, "We can do better than this for our citizens. We can do something better." And what was created was the first responder model for law enforcement on crisis intervention training. The basic goals for CIT are to improve officer and consumer safety and to help people with mental illnesses and addictions to be able to access medical treatment rather than place them in the criminal justice system due to the illness-related behaviors. So the CIT training, which we have implemented here in Alamo Gordo, this is an international model. It's a 40-hour training. It involves many members of the community, 20-plus members, who come together for the 40 hours to do the training. And it teaches officers de-escalation skills, empathy building. We have real-life scenarios, and then the behavioral health components. Several different mental health providers in the community come together to teach basic mental health components. You've got schizophrenia, Alzheimer's, ADHD, and we range from youth and adolescent to seniors in that training. So why is it necessary? What happened in 1955 is there began a de-institutionalization of mental illness, what was formerly known as mental health asylums or psychiatric asylums or insane asylums. There was a lot of abuse going on in those institutions. And in 1955, the government began to de-institutionalize and take those away. It was, and just to give you an example of what happened, there was 558,239 severely mentally ill patients in the nation's psychiatric hospitals in 1955. In 1994, that number was decreased to 71,619. The number of severely mentally ill individuals did not go away. And this is, and there was nothing to catch them. There was no place to put them after the institutions were taken away. So what happened from there is these are the people that you see on the street. You, we want to be able to catch them into community resources, but we're not able to do so. So therefore, um... Sorry, I'm getting a message. Oh, is it, are my slides not moving?
No, no.
No. Okay. Can you see any of my slides at all?
Number one.
All right, halfway through, so I'm going to stop the screen share and come back so that you can see them.
We do have the slideshow in our agenda packet, too, FYI.
Okay, so if anything, I'm just going to keep going for time's sake. So I'm glad you have the slides with you. So the research in the benefits of CIT, what you want is the fish, what has been the benefits is the efficient crisis response times because what has happened without, with our severely mentally ill and those with substance use addictions being in the community is that law enforcement has become the primary responder to those that are afflicted. And so what we see is the benefits of implementing CIT is there's an increase in the jail diversion for those with mental illness, and there's a continuity with community providers, and it has significantly decreased injuries among police officers. So those are some of the benefits that you've seen, and we were able to get a grant. Alamo Gordo was one of four police departments nationwide who received a grant to implement CIT two years ago, and we have done so and continued working on this. So the Mobile Crisis Response Team was part stemmed from that grant that we got because what we did was do a sequential intercept mapping, which identified the gaps in services that Alamo Gordo has. So from there, a grant was put into Paso del Norte Foundation to create a Mobile Crisis Response Team. This is at the very, very beginning, sequential intercept mapping, intercept zero and one, which means the least restrictive means in terms of responding to people. So the Mobile Crisis Response Team consists of myself. I am a social worker and therapist. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, which means independently I can make diagnoses and I can work on my own. I have a CIT officer who is a full officer with the Alamo Gordo Police Department. I have Officer Charlene Ash. She is here with me. And I have my newest team member, my peer support specialist Tracy Rivera is also in the room with me. So together, we make up the Mobile Crisis Response Team. Our purpose is that we are a dedicated team who was created to support the police department and the CIT team officers. Our primary objectives are that we want to reduce unnecessary criminal justice involvement among people living with mental illness or substance use disorder. We want to increase the connection to appropriate evaluation, treatment, and support. And we want to develop those community partnerships to coordinate services to those living with mental illness and assist officers in providing additional crisis intervention skills, referrals to services, education, outreach. So the procedure is, remains the same. People, if they have an emergency, will continue to call 911 or dispatch. Responding officers will then assess whether a crime has been committed and determine whether or not the person's behavior indicates that a mental illness may be the reason for that behavior. They will ascertain whether there's a clear and present danger, and they will try, they will use their skills to safely de-escalate the situations. If they are unable to do so and we need to escalate it to the higher level, then we will be dispatched out. From there, they, so they will decide whether or not the person is suicidal or homicidal or represents such a substantial immediate risk of serious physical impairment or injury that they would benefit from going to the hospital. So if we do go out to the scene, most likely, it will end up in us transporting to, via emergency services, to Gerald Champion if we're at that point. However, if the officer does go out and is able to de-escalate at the scene, what they do, they can put in a referral for us, and we make up that gap for case management services in the community. Most crises happen as a result of the lack of services, medical, um, medical, it could be, it could be food, it could be shelter. We see those as the reasons for a number of crises. So I'm going to skip ahead because I want to get to the numbers for you. So in 2020, the total number of CIT calls to the Alamo Gordo Police Department was 230. The total numbers of CIT transport calls to emergency services was 91. That's a lot for a 30,000 population. And with MCRT, the Mobile Crisis Team, we went live on August 30th, 2020. You can see in your packet the numbers per month for the CIT calls. The first column that you see is the transport for crisis or suicidal and homicidal people. The second bar is the transport for crisis that are non-suicidal. MCRT and CIT transport for emergency services, the front bar that you see on your graph is officer transport. The bar behind it is MCR assisted transport for emergency services. The MCRT referrals, so those needing case management, as the column behind are the referrals that we have received from officers, and the column in front is those who have agreed and have been participating in MCRT to get services from us. This is how we've grown, starting in September. Phone calls that I myself, as the clinician, took. I took 14 calls, crisis calls and case management calls in the month of September. October went to 26, November 78, December hit 124, and January was 125. In January, I added in the phone call specifically for the officer, which was 10, and these are just for MCRT. And that's a total of 135 calls for January. As word has gotten out, more people are requesting Mobile Crisis Response Services. And the total call for the CIT officer since August has been 409. That is our presentation at this point, and we are open for questions. And we do have, like I said, Officer Charlene Ash and her support specialist Tracy Rivera in the room as well.
Does any commissioners have any questions?
Two questions. Ms. Berunda, are the dispatchers trained in CIT to know that when a call comes in, where it needs to be directed?
That is part of the CIT training is to teach dispatch to differentiate between a call for service versus a CIT call. And almost all of our dispatchers at this point have been trained.
A follow-up question. I want to thank you for that presentation. That was really informative. The numbers at the end of the presentation are very significant. They're almost alarming. And I, I'm just curious. I know that you're the clinician. Officer Ash is the police person on board, and then you have a peer specialist. A question for Officer Ash. How are the other Alamo Gordo police accepting the crisis intervention team? How, what is their attitude?
Um, I think they're, they like it. They're finding that their time on a scene for a call for somebody in a crisis, it's a quick turnaround for them. Once we get on scene, we're able to let them go and respond to other Christ, or other patrol calls. Also, rather than them, if they put somebody in protective custody, they no longer have to go and wait at the hospital for two to six hours. That's something that we can go do, or we can, we can already give our assessment to the ER. And so they, I mean, it's a quick turnaround for them as well on that end.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Berunda, and thank you, Chief Denton, for your support of the project.
I just want to add on to Officer Ash's response. One of the things that we do for the emergency room is I am able to do a mental health assessment in the field. So by the time we get to the emergency room with the transport, with the person that we are transporting, I'm able to give my mental health assessment to the provider on duty, whoever it is, and they don't have to wait around to get somebody else to come in and do the entire interview and go through everything. The other thing that we have caught is, for example, we had a young man who was suicidal with a firearm. We got to the emergency room, and he said, "I'm fine. I don't need this. I don't need this intervention." Whereas I came up and said, we had him on video, you know, he was talking online, had the firearm with him to his head. This is, this is the young man who needs help. So there's, we were able to catch him, whereas in the emergency room, if they're not presenting as suicidal in the moment, they may not keep him.
Ms. Berunda, thank you and your staff so much for the service you provide to our community. It's very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We love your job.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Presentation. Thank you, Chief.
That was really informative. Thank you.
We'll move on to second presentation, is presentation of stats within the city police department, a three-year comparison. We have our chief Denton to give us that report. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. I'm trying to get my screen to share here. So what I have is just a quick, just some stats with Alamo Gordo Police Department over the last three years. Just, I get, have been asked by a few folks, some comparisons due to the pandemic. Just over the last three years, we've taken 91,000 calls in the police department. So you can see the percentage of that number. In 2019, we had several more calls than what we've had in 2018 and 2020. And as we go through these, if you guys have any questions, don't hesitate to interrupt me. I'll answer what I can. This just means we took 10% fewer calls in 2018 than we did in 2019, and roughly about 15% fewer in 2020. So the pandemic didn't really shut us down that much in 2020 as far as taking calls. We're still out there taking, taking several calls. So the, let me go back, the... Just the violent crime calls, I can't see all my numbers just because everybody's pictures are up there. But I can, I can tell you the total charges of our violent crimes are obviously higher in 2019. Our violent crime calls are up significantly, and most of this is due with domestic disputes. Now, not all these domestic disputes end up in a charge, but you can just see by the numbers that they're considerably higher. Everything else is pretty close relatively for the last three years. And these are just the domestic disputes. You can see in 2018, we were, we were fairly low. And 2019, we were 501. I can't see my final number for 2020. But if I remember correctly, about 73% higher than what we were in 2018.
Can I interrupt you, Chief, for a minute?
Absolutely.
That, that would be as a direct result of COVID, I would presume.
That's, that's all I can assume, Mayor. I wish I had an exact answer on that, but that's, that's an assumption that I make as well.
I would, I think that's, I think that's a legitimate, something I really do.
I agree.
Sorry. I think just people being closed up in their houses together, obviously, they're going to have more arguments. That doesn't mean people are getting charged. I just put that on there as how many calls we went to as far as domestic issues. And then, and there's a, this highlighted blue on this is incorrect. This wasn't, it wasn't down. It was slightly up in 2018 over, I'm sorry, 2020 slightly up over 2018. But once again, you can see where, where our, our property crimes are at. And then, a lot of people don't know this, how many stolen motor vehicles we have in our city per year. This is why we do those public service announcements, trying to make sure people are locking their cars and taking their keys in and hauling their valuables inside, too. There's a lot of these, sometimes they get their vehicles stolen for sure, but you know, it's what, what else was taken inside that vehicle? They have wallets and purses and things like that in there. And then usually in our crash, our traffic stops and our crashes, early on, I know when I first become an officer, it would show that if we had more traffic stops, our crashes would decrease, our crime would decrease. And this, this slide doesn't necessarily depict that for sure. You can see our traffic crashes are still up there for this year. And we've had basically half, little less than half the amount of traffic stops. But it's, I'm surprised that the traffic crashes aren't higher than that based on, based on the traffic stops. And then these are animal control numbers. We have our calls for service significantly higher in 2020. Again, I think this is partially due with the pandemic going on. People are at home and see more dogs on the loose and things like that. Took in 1,200 animals. You can see this year, they, they didn't adopt out as many, but of course, we didn't take in as many either. We only, our euthanizations are really dropping. You can see that from 2018, we were 573. And in 2020, we only had 36. So we're starting to keep animals longer and starting to, we're teamed up with, with Ms. Denton at Kitty City that helps us out a lot in adopting the cats and the dogs, actually. And that's my presentation. If you guys have any questions, or in the future, if there's some type of statistical data, some other type of presentation you'd like to see, I'm open for questions or suggestions, and thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Sure.
The domestic disputes, it's pretty alarming, first of all, but is that, is that, um... Is that just like spouses, or is that, does that include like, maybe like teenage children? Is that any domestic dispute or?
That's correct. That's, we don't have a way to classify the differences in it. If it's a, if it's a domestic dispute, that's what it gets classified as.
Okay, so it could be parents and kids, or it could be anything, really?
Yeah, it could be brother and sister, could be parents and kids, you know, and it's just, we still classify that as a, as a domestic dispute. And if, another thing to remember on that also, the commission remembers, we went to our new Spillman CAD system. We went live with that back in August. And so now, the reporting on this, how that system keeps track of everything, you're going to see our numbers go up anyway, just merely due to our system. And that, that's one thing with the animal calls, keeping track of the animal calls correctly now is why you see that number increased. It's not necessarily that it increased, I feel, but our system keeps better track of, of everything now.
Chief, have there been more stops where drugs were involved? I mean, you know, the commission gets the reports on, on the activity of each of the officers. And it appears to me, I've done this five years, it seems like that, it's gone up considerably. The drugs involved where you, maybe an accident for, an accident, but you find drugs on the person, or they have drug paraphernalia. Is that true? Is it going up?
I would agree with you, Mayor, and that, and we're seeing, we're seeing more of that also just to, you know, if all you're, if all we're taking are those, making those traffic stops where it's the ones that it's in a dire need, hey, this car needs to be stopped, and not necessarily maybe for a simple equipment violation or something. You're, you're going to see, I figured that number would have dropped, but, and I haven't done that. That's something that I can look into and try to give you guys some information on that, for sure. That exactly might be difficult to get it exact, but I can get close and let you know, like the last three years, do some type of comparison on that for you.
If you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, sir.
Mayor, I have, I have one more question.
Mayor Pro, oh, Mr. Payne.
It was me. I'm sorry. Um... My other question is, and it's because you brought it up, I do read those activity sheets. And you know what I've noticed a lot of, and I don't know if this is due to the system, or, or maybe there's just an increase, but it seems like almost once a week, there's an unattended death. And I, have you seen an increase in that, or do you track that, or is it just, I don't, I'm not really sure what the answer is to that?
It just, and this is nothing that I've tracked. This is just, it's assumption on my part again. It seems like in our winter months, every year, we have more deaths in our winter months, for sure. But that's something else that I, I'd be more than happy.
This just seems like an unusual amount for me. Yeah, I'm curious. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but it just seems like an unusual amount to me. Not only is it an unusual amount, but the age of the people, they're not, they're not what I would call elderly. You know, I'm seeing 50s and 60s, and it just, I don't know, I just find it interesting. It's something I've really kind of been keeping an eye on because I've never seen that before, but the age of the people also is a little alarming to me.
I don't know. It seems to me, it seems to me like most of them are in there, are older. And I haven't seen the younger ones. I looked at that report. I didn't realize that.
That's something I can look into, but you know, you say that, and I, I got a notification of another one just a little bit ago. So yeah, that's, they happen, they're happening quite often in these wintertime months.
Mayor Pro Tem Sykes.
Yeah. Chief, thank you for that presentation. It's interesting to see local crime statistics. One thing I was curious about, does Spillman track crimes that are solved?
Well, so that's a, I can't give you a direct answer on that, to be honest with you. What we would say is we can look into the charges of our cases and see... of our cases and see what those are. So we would have to look, I I could probably run a report in there that would show um the open cases, the like closed pending further leads or something like that, that a charge is associated with. Um the one thing with Spillman that we're dealing with right now is, we, you know, we just went live in August and it's once we get enough data in there, the Spillman folks, we're kind of limited on our reports right now with it. Because you you really need a bunch of data in there before you get accurate things out of it.
Before you start seeing trends, yes.
Yeah, so we're um, you know, we're really looking forward to that. And I and I'll be honest with you, the the struggle is real and how many reports we can run in there. Um just today, I was messing around with it, trying to um run different reports, but once we get more more data in there, we will be able to pinpoint pinpoint more types of reports that we run and of course, getting the Otero County Detention Center on board with it. Um and having them enter all their information that, we pull a lot of reports from them also. Uh how they enter their information on people who are incarcerated and what the charges are also, but it will be, there's there's those reports that are closed pending further leads that would show that it is not, that would mean a crime is not solved, or that key particular case is not solved. Um and then we would want run them that you know, we we could have a crime that it's, maybe it's solved, but we didn't charge anyone. It didn't turn out to be a crime. It might have turned out to be a civil matter or something.
I see. Well, thank you. That was very interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public comment. Uh so we have two people tonight.
Yes. Yes, we do. Um we had two two letters that we received. And the first one is from Maureen Schmittl. She's the Health Promotion Specialist for Otero County with the New Mexico Department of Health, Southwest Region. And she writes, esteemed Mayor Boss, City Commissioners and City Manager Brian Caesar. I was honored to be a member of the Advisory Council during planning for the Mobile Crisis Response Team and the Crisis Intervention Training Program. I commend and thank Jeanette Burunda, Officer Ash, and Chief Denton for implementing this vital program. The important ongoing work of the M C R T has been recognized by local professionals and our public alike. I know this is a life-saving work and lifts up our police department and among their peers for utilizing best practices. Additionally, thank you for the great work of regularly holding crisis intervention trainings and making these available to other law enforcement and first responders in our region. This is excellent leadership and practice and example. Thank you, Maureen Schmittl. And then the second one is from Holly J. Mata. She's the President of the Otero County Community Health Council. And Holly writes, dear City Commissioners, we want to thank you for your support of the Alamogordo Crisis Intervention Team CIT program in general and the A P D Mobile Crisis Response Team in particular. We all want people living with a mental illness or substance use disorder to get the support and services they need in our community. And we all want our officers to have the resources and training they need to safely respond to people in crisis. Supporting and sustaining the CIT initiative in our community is a health council priority and is an important part of improving our community mental health systems. On behalf of the Otero County Community Health Council, thank you for your service and for your commitment to our community. With gratitude, Holly J. Mata.
Thank you, Teresa. We'll move on now to the City Manager's Report. Uh Brian Caesar, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief tonight. Um as I mentioned, a, I believe it was two commission meetings ago, uh this week, we've actually started our meetings with finance, myself, the department heads, managers, other city staff members going over the uh their proposed budget for next fiscal year. Everything is on track. We're moving forward with that. Planning on holding the meetings um with with commission, the budget hearings uh in May. By that point, we should know either from a federal level or more likely a state level what is going to pass with minimum wage and the other bills that we've been watching that affect police department, other areas, uh regulatory areas with water, wastewater. Um so, right now, uh what we're, what we believe previous years, we've had, we've had hearings that lasted one night. Um this year, more than likely, it's going to be at least two, if not more nights. There's a lot of things to discuss and and for commission to consider. Um and the proposed budget for for next fiscal year. We'll be holding these initial meetings for the for the rest of this week. Um at that point, finance will will take um the changes, get those implemented, and those budget, rerun everything. And then we will be sitting down uh and discussing uh capital requests, equipment requests, and um personnel requests. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Move on to remarks and inquiries by the City Commission. Would any commissioner like to make any comments or any inquiries? Well, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any staff member or commissioner like to pull any item from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a a motion to accept, I'm sorry. Jason Baldwin, I have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear it second?
I'll second.
I have a second from uh Mayor Pro Tem Nudia Sykes. All those in favor? I, I'm sorry, uh I think the clerk, is that is that roll call? It is roll.
No. No, there's, this one is not a roll call.
Okay, all those in favor? I. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes seven zero. The consent agenda is approved. Move on to unfinished business. Item five, consider an act upon case B twenty twenty dash zero 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 two A to allow the placement of a fourteen by forty-six foot manufactured home that has been placed in the rear yard of the property located at eight eighteen eighth street within the R three zoning district, which is two-family dwelling district. We have Stella Vail, our city planner, here with us tonight, and I think other people. Comment. Stella, do you want to start off?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm gonna bring up my slideshow really quick. I think it's gonna be quick. Okay, let's see if we can get it up here. It doesn't seem like it's gonna let me share it. So I'll just go ahead since you all have the the presentation in front of you.
Stella, if you want us to, we can.
Oh, would you please? Yeah, it's not letting me share it, obviously. Okay, so I guess you're gonna have to man it for me, correct, Teresa?
I'm gonna try.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, City Manager Caesar. First of all, as you can see, my slideshow is dated January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-one. Um the reason for that is this item was to come in front of you for final decision on that date and per property owner request. It has been rescheduled. Um second slide, please. One more. There you go. Thank you. Okay, the request is the applicant has placed a fourteen by forty-six manufactured home in the rear of his property and is requesting a variance to be allowed to keep the home placed at this location. Property owner is Pedro Edes, and the address we are referring to is eight eighteen eighth street within an R three two-family zone, two-family dwelling zoning district. Next. Here are just um slides showing you the difference between the R three use regulations and the R one use regulations. Next. Again, please. One more time. Here I've included uh the M H one um use regulations. This is what allows uh manufactured housing in that zoning district. Again. One more time. That talks about the same thing within um subdivisions. Um the property again is located at eight eighteen eighth street within the R three two-family dwelling district. The request is for variance to allow this fourteen by forty-six manufactured home, which has been placed in the rear of this property. Property owners requesting variance to be allowed to keep a home placed at this location. The application was filed on October fifteenth of twenty twenty. Legal notices were published or a legal legal notice was published in the Alamogordo Daily News on November fifteen, twenty twenty. Twenty-three letters were mailed by first-class mail to all property owners of record within two hundred feet from the property, excluding the public right-of-way property for which the variance is sought. Again, Teresa, please. As of January nineteen twenty twenty, I had not received any written letters of opposition. I had received four phone calls voicing opposition, which I asked callers to submit letters of opposition to make part of the record. At that time, no written letters of opposition have been received. Since then, I have received several more phone calls and a two-page letter of opposition from a a neighbor, next-door neighbor. I took this item in front of our planning and zoning board on December third of twenty twenty. Oops, I'm sorry, that's this twenty twenty-one, it's twenty twenty. The planning and zoning board recommended denial by vote of four to zero. Um I believe Armando Ortega is present to answer any questions regarding the property. Uh for the record, he is not the property owner. He is the son of the property owner. Um I am also available to answer any questions.
Stella.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
So the the letter, the two-page letter that you got, is that the same one that the commission received?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Do you know? Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and that's the name, that those are the neighbors.
Correct, right next door.
Yeah, okay, okay. I'm assuming everybody else got that same letter.
Stella, have we done this to for anybody in the past? Anything similar to this?
No, sir. Um we have not, and um I as staff recommend denial of this case um due to the fact that it does not comply with the current zoning requirements within an R three zoning district.
Um Mayor, I have another question.
Mr. Payne.
Yeah, Stella, um was there any request to put this in at all? Any did did the city know about this ahead of time? Was there any request to place this there or?
Well, I'll give you I'll give you a little of the background history. Back um May fifth of twenty twenty, we received paperwork um for a placement of a twenty, oh, excuse me, of a twelve by forty building to be placed in the backyard to use as storage, so as an accessory building. Um after several conversations with Mr. Ortega, um I explained that the contractor that was going to be moved in the building was going to have to submit paperwork and apply for all the proper permits. We had not heard uh anything more. Um there was a few conversations, you know, in between that time, but um then we received a complaint late September of the manufactured home being placed there. So I reached out to the property owner and him and his son came in and I explained to them that it did not belong there. They were gonna have to remove it. They asked what other options they had, and I said they could apply for a variance. Uh they did have that prerogative, so on, and that was on um October ninth that I spoke with the property owner. And then shortly after that, I received the paperwork for the variance. So that's how it all came about. We learned of it through a complaint from a neighbor.
Stella, this is um Sharon McDonald. I just wanted to ask, so are they gonna use that uh for storage, or is someone gonna be living in that um in that trailer?
Can I, can I answer that question?
I cannot answer that question, Commissioner. Donald of the property owner would have to answer.
Mr. Ortega, I think can I can answer that.
I can answer that question. Um my name is Armando Ortega. Um thank you for having us this evening. Um just to give you guys just real quick of of a synopsis of how this all transpired, real quick, from my point of view, yes, Stella is correct. On April twenty-seventh, I contacted planning and zoning to ask them, we uh, my my uh, my dad purchased a um building from Tip Top Trailers. When I say Tip Top Trailers, they sell um uh construction trailers, not manufactured homes or anything. He used this trailer as his office. This manufactured home is his office. Okay, it has no kitchen, it has a toilet, no shower, nothing. That's all it has in it. So I contacted um uh planning and zoning and Shelby was very helpful. Um Stella was at out of the office um at the time. I did speak to Stella briefly one day, but for the most part, I did all all my communication through Shelby, and I have several emails. Um so the city was contacted, yes. The city was contacted and we explained to them that we that my dad purchased a building solely for, so because he owns two two other houses on that block. Okay, so he bought that so he can put all, he can he can do all his construction stuff in there. So it's not gonna be used for a dwelling. Yes, he did connect water and sewer to it for the bathroom. Okay, so he don't have to go into the other, he if he's working in the workshop, he don't have to go anywhere and you know, leave the premises to to use the rest, to relieve himself, whatever. So I contacted Stella. Um finally got me and Stella um talked in length and just like she said, my last correspondence with her with her is whoever's going to move that is gonna have to pull permits. So to me, that is saying, okay, and and it was my, if 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 I misinterpreted it, my fault. But to me, when someone tells me that, I'm assuming, okay, someone's gonna go move it, they gotta pull a permit. We hired a person from Las Cruces. I called, I called myself, I called CID myself, and they said we couldn't pull the permit, that the person moving it had to pull the permit. So we hired someone, they moved the trailer. As to whether they got a permit or not, I still to this day, I'm not sure because I can't get a hold of the guy. So we went through the proper steps, the proper channels in order to 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 get this moved. It was already in the city limits. Yes, it wasn't, it wasn't the right um um zoning, but um we thought we had, because I turned in that paper. Zoning, but we thought we had, because I turned in that paper. As a matter of fact, I had to turn that that paperwork in two or three times. To get clarification to show setbacks. I showed setbacks that it was, I mean, everything was done by the book. We got electrical permit to put electricity in it. So we were kind of surprised that this issue came up. And just one more thing I want to add. Twenty-three letters were sent out. Okay, they had a they had a deadline. They had a deadline to me. To either turn in the letter, okay, or go in person to the planning and zoning and and complain, okay? Why is this stuff being brought up after the fact? After the planning and zoning meeting, this shouldn't even be. It, I mean, anything, anything after that day shouldn't even be admissible to what what's happening today. Because they have a deadline. Your letter they got, because we also got one, gave them a deadline to do their complaint. Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is we have, I could show you, I have. Seventeen signatures of other people around there who said it's not a problem. Because just a block and a half away from our, from from my mom and dad's property is a mobile home park. So and you could see the pictures. That that workshop's gonna be, it's gonna look better than half of the houses on that block. So and I'm just, you know, I mean, I I understand it could have been a miscommunication. But when someone tells me that the permits have to be pulled to move it, I'm assuming we're good.
Can I ask a question? Commissioner Payne. Mr. Ortega, did you, did they say that it was going to be used for storage?
Yes, ma'am, we we have to put that on the application.
Okay, so nobody's living in there.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, because it's my understanding that somebody's living in there.
That that is not correct. You can go send someone over tomorrow. There is absolutely no one living inside there.
And I don't, I'm just, it's just my understanding.
Yeah, Stella Stella went and did a site, a site visit and she can tell you. Pretty sure she walked inside it and she can tell you there's no bathroom, there's no kitchen, other, I mean, sorry, bathroom, there's a toilet. But there's no shower. All there is is a bathroom in there. That's it.
Mayor, is that correct?
Is that, yeah, Stella?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Um, I did perform a site visit when I first got the complaint. I called the property owner and explained I received a complaint and I needed to go in and look. Yes, at that point, they had recently moved it in. There was construction material in there like sheet rock and things like that. It looked like, you know, they were going to be doing some work and I can't say whether it's going to be a storage unit or if it's going to be a home. All I know is it's a manufactured home at this point in time and it doesn't belong in an R R three zoning district.
Did it? Did it have a kitchen?
Uh, no, sir. There was a cabinet, but there wasn't a functioning kitchen.
Mr. Mayor, I got some comments, questions.
Yes, Commissioner Redden.
One of them's for Mr. Ortega. What kind of a foundation did you guys put? Is it just blocked or is it on a permanent foundation?
It's sitting on, it's sitting on a permanent foundation, but it's blocked. Yes, there's concrete.
There's a concrete runners under there?
Yeah, because there used to be. Yeah, there used to be a home there, Josh, or Commissioner Redden, sorry.
Okay, so it's strapped down on a on a permanent foundation?
No, it's on, it's on blocks.
Well, I know, but when you do the HUD foundations or FHA, as long as it has the concrete runners and it has the blocking permit and it's strapped down correctly, it's considered a permanent foundation.
Permanent foundation.
Okay, no, then it's not, then I guess, I mean, it's.
Okay, I'm just asking on that. And then, once it's all done, I actually know that structure. I do business with Mr. Tapley where it came from. So he he's not lying on that. It does only have, I think it has one main room when you walk in and then there's a rest. An office in the back corner was all that was ever in that. It's all set and done. Are you guys gonna underpin it if it does remain in the event we prove this? Is it gonna be under underpinned and and all of that, so it looks more presentable?
Well, absolutely. If you see, if if you go, like I said. If you go look at it, it's already an improvement than what it was on Tip Top Trailers property. And and the reason and the reason he did that is, for one, that's type of person he is, but two, he also didn't want the neighbors to have issue with it, so he it's it's. It's.
Mr. McDonald, you had a question?
Well, I I don't have so much a question, but I have gone by there and I have seen the the trailer and and where it's it's parked. And sometimes I look at the other properties that are in there. And one of the things that I noticed that those are brand new fences and they're wooden fences, I do believe. So we have a look and I I guess what I'm looking at is the trailer does not. You know, I said, based on what has happened. I don't understand about pulling the permits right now. But I I just couldn't understand why the trailer was put there before it was actually approved. So I I'm just looking at the the look of the neighborhood, the reason the trailer is there. And then on top of that, the way it is pinned, or it's not pinned, but it's so close to the the fence. That if something were to happen in there, like you said, you're doing construction, if something were to happen in there. There is no chance of, I'm just saying, a fire, whatever, in any type of accident. There's no chance for any of the other neighbors to salvage their property. And that's what I I'm looking at. And I said, I haven't, I've heard from a couple of the neighbors. But when I look at something being put on the property before it's approved. And the neighbors are, you know, I I think pretty much in this district, people let things go. And then, of course, now they're, you know, saying something about it. And I think right now I would be against it and I'm not, I don't know you. But I'm just saying, right now, the look and the way the the trailer is in that yard, based on the other properties. I think it would be very, very difficult for that property if it were to, something were to happen. I think it would be very difficult for the other neighbors to salvage their their homes, their fences because of any type of damage. And that's what I was looking at.
Okay, can I can I speak to that? It actually meets all the setback requirements that the city puts puts forth.
It meets all the what?
It all the setbacks.
All setbacks, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Redden.
That's what part of my question was, is is does it, if we consider that an accessory building in the rear yard. Does it meet all of our required setbacks are two feet and then I think it can be all the way up to the dedicated alley, correct? On the backside of the house and then it has two feet off of the side sidelines?
It is two and two, two from the rear and two from the side. And it must be no closer than ten feet from the main structure.
From the structure and do we meet all those setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
Now.
One other, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I just wanted to explain a little bit and about the permitting process. Mr. Ortega is saying that I did inform him that permits needed to be pulled and they need to be pulled by the mover. That is correct. CID will not accept paperwork from a homeowner. If a structure like this is being moved by a mover. It is the homeowner's responsibility to make sure that all proper permits are pulled. The process is when you're moving a manufactured home. The mover has to obtain a transport permit from the state. Okay, so then, once that transport permit is issued. They come to our department for what we call a blocking permit or a placement permit. At that time, the property owner or the mover has to submit a site plan indicating where it's going to be placed. Where the setbacks are. They also have to pull the proper plumbing, mechanical, electrical permits. At that point, what happens is the CID manufactured housing inspector will come out and inspect, make sure that it's blocked properly. And it's meeting the setback requirements per site plan. And then at that point, he's also looking at. Are the util, is the water connected, the water and sewer connected properly, is electrical connected properly? And if it isn't, passes inspection, then he releases the utilities to the to the, gives the utility company permission to release utilities. Just to give you an idea of what the process is. And at this point, none of this was done. When I was speaking with with Mr. Ortega. All the paperwork indicates putting a twelve by forty building in the backyard. And I'm reading this right off his site plan. The backyard of the eight eighteen eighth street building will be ten feet from the alley, seven feet from the east neighbor's fence. And twenty-five feet from the existing home. A twelve by forty building. We are now talking about a fourteen by forty-six manufactured home.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I guess my concern, my biggest concern would probably be. Okay, so I understood somebody was living in it, so that's great. If they're not, that's that makes me feel a little bit better, but. I will say it's still a mobile home. And if we approve something like this, regardless of what it's being used for, if it's a mobile home, what we're doing is we're approving a variance for a mobile home. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, so if we do that, are we setting a precedence? Are we gonna find other houses in that neighborhood that have mobile homes backed up into it? And if we do, how are we going to set that apart? Because I I wouldn't want to set a precedence. That's my concern. With this, like I said, I'm less concerned now that I know somebody's not living in it. But I still think that we have to be careful and not set a precedence.
Mayor, I got a comment.
Mr. Redden?
Oh, I'm just. The argument of that actually being a home, it's it's more of a mobile office is what it would be classified as. Because for CID to classify it as a home, it has to have a working HVAC system, a working kitchen sink. It has to have a, basically a functioning kitchen and then functioning restroom, shower facilities. So basically, it doesn't have everything to consider it a home. So it's it's more of a, you actually use buildings like that is is mobile job site trailers because they're portable. And they have the offices, the and the restroom in there. So essentially, it's not a, it's it's not technically a home. It's a, it's a mobile office, essentially. So I'm kind of torn on that, on how we, I mean, I understand he didn't pull the correct permits and all that kind of stuff, but. They can go back and pull those and get the required inspections and go down that road if we need to, but the.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question and I'll ask you, Josh, because you would know. Could that, could those things be installed at some point?
They could. You could go very easily go in, call a shower or a kitchen or something down the road, but. Like I say, I've been in that 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 building sat out there on the highway and it doesn't look aesthetically bad. It was his his office until he built a new one. It sat out there for probably twenty years. Out there on that property, it used to be, I think it was big guy's auto sales and then he passed away and and then Mr. Tapley bought that place and turned it into the trailer sales, so. I mean, I know the 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 structure that they're talking about, so.
Yeah, I'm real torn with that. I I have a concern. I have a concern about it and I'm real torn about how you proceed with that.
I have a question. First of all, I appreciate Mr. Ortega's comments and Josh, I only wish I knew as much as you about. Everything to do with zoning. As a as a commissioner, for a number of years, I rely on. The planning and zoning director and I rely on the planning zoning commission, the advisory commission. To give us advice so that when we walk into a commission meeting, we can, we can look what they've looked at, look what they've investigated, look at the work that they've done. And we can. Better vote. Stella, why did the four-member planning and zoning commission vote against this back in, I guess it was October?
It was in December. Yes, ma'am. Um, they voted against it because they're seeing it as a manufactured home and the possibility that. At this present time, it may not be a home for anyone, but they're looking at it that in the future, it's a manufactured home, it can become a home. So they, they're going along with the ordinance and and seeing as a manufactured home in that does not belong in that zoning district.
I see. The the thing that bothers me the most, I guess, and I guess, Armando, this is kind of for you. I I I respect the process. And so often, when the process isn't followed, it causes the city, the planning and zoning commission, the city commission. Added problems. Had the process been followed properly, would would we even be here discussing this?
I can ask, I can answer that. As far as I was concerned, the process was followed. Was followed accordingly. I, like I said, maybe I misunderstood, maybe I took it the wrong way, but when they told me, I turned in all the paperwork, they told me all the paperwork was fine. Once they told me, I I told them what's the next step, you're gonna have to get the person who's moving it to get a permit. So I assumed that that was the next step. Okay, so I didn't disrespect the process. I went through, I I contacted planning and zoning, I turned in the applications, I turned in the setbacks, the the site plan with the setbacks. So I didn't, I didn't purposely. Not follow the entire process, if that answers your question. If I can add something, can I add something, Mr. Mayor? Can I add something? I want to add something, please.
Yeah, oh, yes, okay.
Okay, so just so you guys know, who, who, first of all, who does the minutes for the planning and zoning meetings?
My administrative assistant.
Okay, so what I want to bring up is there were a couple of. Incidents that happened in the planning and zoning commission meeting, okay? One of the incidents was, and they had to remind Stella that it was a quorum. She was texting with some of the board members at the time and giving them information and one of the board members found out. And they explained to Stella that because there was a quorum, you couldn't do that because of Robert's rules of of order, okay? It's in the minutes. But in the minutes that you guys are showing on here, it's not on there. Okay, another, another thing, and the only reason I'm saying this, I'm bringing this up is because it did have an effect on how they voted. Another thing was she brought up what I said earlier. People had the opportunity to complain in person and they had the opportunity to complain also in writing. Okay, she brought up the fact that people, she had had people call her. And when she did that, that kind of swayed a couple of people on their vote, in my opinion. Okay, we have, we have. Rules in these meetings we have to follow for a reason.
Um, if I can. If I can please chime in.
Our city attorney has a comment, I believe, that Tere Fingus said.
I I appreciate Mr. Ortega, I appreciate your advocacy and I'm sure, Ms. Rael, that you have a response. But at this point, we're we're so far beyond talking about whether or not we're approving a variance. That I'm not sure that we're gonna conform with the with Open Meetings Act at this point. So I think that we need to skip this. If, Mr. Ortega, you have an issue with an Open Meetings Act violation, I'm happy to discuss that with you. Or or certainly, you know. Where you need to go. Well, if I can just finish, please, and then you can have the floor. I think maybe what I'm hearing from several of the commissioners that might help is that there's some confusion, if I may. That an original application was received for a building that is a different size maybe than this manufactured home. Manufactured home, and I think that's some of the confusion. So maybe you can talk about when you filed your original application, why the dimensions are different than what's there today, and I think that. That will clear things up for a lot here and that hasn't quite been addressed yet, so. If I can just try and help a little, that would be my two cents.
Okay, and the only reason I brought that up is because, um. Um, Commissioner Sykes had asked me if I went through the process. So that's the only reason I brought that up and, and I just, I wa, I, the only reason. I, I, I wanted to be fair across the board, okay? And so I, yes, I contacted the homeowner about the size of, of the, the previous, I've contacted Mark Tapley and he gave me them dimensions. Okay, and so I was in the process of doing the, um, application prior to. Um, prior to, uh, uh, getting the actual title in hand. And that was part of the big issue is the, is the county who had went over there and we hadn't transferred the title yet, so. Um, with that said, um, that's really all I have to say about that.
Mr. Baldwin said his hand. Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just had a question for Stella and then a couple of comments. Did you say that water and sewer were hooked up to the structure?
Yes, there is.
Okay, and that was permitted or not permitted?
No, it was not, I contacted CID to see if they had actually issued any permits, uh, mechanical plumbing. Or electrical permits and the response was no mechanical and plumbing permits have been issued. And in two thousand nineteen, there was electrical permit pulled, not for this manufactured home. But for the main residence on that block.
And that there.
I'm sorry.
Is there, is there electricity going to the structure now?
I have no idea.
Okay, so. Uh, Commissioner Payne's comments on, you know, I, I think we're all trying to figure out, is this a big deal, is this not a big deal? We do get these situations all the time when we're asked for variances after the fact, which I'm not very appreciative of. But it kind of sounds to me like if it was not a mobile home. If it was an actual office, there'd be less of an issue here, is that kind of correct? If it was just a, you know, fourteen by forty-six or ten by forty structure, whatever was put on the application, if it was just a square. And it was an office, this would be less of an issue, because that's something that could go on this dwelling, but a manufactured home cannot.
Correct, if it was a, if it was an actual accessory building and it did meet all the requirements. Uh, including setback requirements, uh, no, there would not be an issue.
Okay, so I have, I have an issue with the size being different, but, you know, I can chalk that up to information given to Mr. Ortega and. You know, it being wrong, as long as it still meets all the setbacks, setback requirements as stated by, uh, Mr. Ortega that it did. Uh, and Josh, I shall, uh, confirm what some of those setback requirements were. Um, I have a real issue with it being hooked up to water and sewer prior to permit, I mean, that's, we're getting into that territory, well, let's just get it there, get it hooked up. And then there's really not much that can happen to it, and I'm sorry, Mano, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm just talking about other cases we've dealt with. Um, but is there any way, once this process is done, that we could make sure that stays? An office building, a storage building and not turn into a home, once we say yes to this variance. And i- if we say yes to this variance, do we move forward, is there any recourse the city has? If for some reason, somebody moves into that structure later on, that's what's gonna get us into trouble. So i- is there anything we can do other than the word of the homeowner? That says this has to stay this kind of structure for the rest of its, its existence on there without some kind of other variance, other process we go through?
Absolutely, you can do that, you just approve the variance with a contingency on it, that it can only be used for. And I don't want to say office, you'd want to say, uh, it, it can be used for any use that doesn't involve. That someone living there, essentially, I mean, we put the legalese on it, but. Essentially, you want to say that we'll approve the variance, but no occupants ever can live there.
Okay, i- it, that sounds like the, this is the biggest issue to this commission right now. Is because the, the visual of it, that it's a mobile home, that we, we shouldn't be putting a mobile home there. Uh, we have evidence from people who've actually seen it and the person actually putting it down, that it's. Not a mobile home, it's basically an office, which falls more into the, okay, well, let's, let's move forward with this and let it happen. Um, I just want, i- i- if I were to say yes to this, I just want to make sure that there is legal recourse if a year from now or two years from now. Uh, or maybe even after the homeowners, uh, sell the home, you know, God forbid, you know, they're there for another thirty or forty years. That this does not turn into a home for somebody else at some point. If there's legal recourse for that, then I'd be willing to, uh. To move forward.
I think Commissioner Baldwin, I mean, legal recourse is always gonna be a lawsuit and, I mean, nobody's gonna win in that type of litigation, but. That would be what we'd have to do if they went with a non-conforming use, we'd have to take them to court in order to have that removed, which. I, I mean, would be a commission decision, obviously. Believe it happens fifty years in the future.
Sure, and that would pass with the property, not, not the owners, correct? Somebody else, yeah, okay. Thank you.
This is, uh, Commissioner.
Oh, I think, go ahead, let me, Commissioner McDonald, go ahead and let her, yeah. Go ahead.
You know, one of the things that, um, we're looking at for the area, and I don't have, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't have anything against, uh, Mr. Ortega. Or anybody doing anything in the area, but one of the things that, you know, I, I think we want to look at. And that is, uh, through the comprehensive plan, uh, the designated areas, the way it's set up, uh, the zoning. Uh, all those things. I, I just keep looking at the fact that we want the area not to look different, but we want it to be what it says. Uh, and so when we look at that, we don't have to keep coming to the commission for a variance. And, and that's what we're trying to, well, that's what we want in the area, is everything to be aligned with what the, uh, the, you know, the way it's zoned. So when we start having all these little piecemeals come in, then it sets a, a precedent and, you know, I said, I, I don't. I, I guess I don't see how we can put a building that big in the backyard. And, and not, uh, see issues that, uh, are happening. And if you just go one block over, if you're hooking that up to some of the, uh, the sewer, water and sewer. Uh, we have one issue, uh, right down the street, which is open. And the sewage is not being handled by the system yet. So I, I just keep looking at adding things on to, um, you know, just the sewage. Uh, how things are happening and, you know, just making sure we get some things right before we start adding more things on. And, and that's, that's my, uh, objection, like I said, I don't, I don't have anything against anyone. I just want to make sure that for the area, I said, it's all looking the same, we're, uh, you know, accepting the zoning. So that, you know, we can have some type of, uh, you know, everything is zone R three and then, you know, I said, if it's R three, let it be R three. And not go anyplace else and, and like I said, just for the sake of looking like, you know, we care about an area. Instead of adding stuff on that makes it look like, oh, yeah, you can do anything. So I think that's what I'm looking at as a commissioner for that, uh, particular area. It, right now, it is a struggle, uh, making sure that our area looks like somebody lives there. And that's all I'm saying on that issue and, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to even prolong it, but, uh, I, that's, that's my point.
Commissioner Riden, did you have a comment?
I did, it looks like Commissioner Wright wants to make one and he hasn't spoke it.
Okay, uh, whichever, which, Mr. Wright?
Sure, first of all, I've got some personal issues that I will abstain from voting on this one, um. But I think if we open up the can of looking at. Putting something in that backyard and we take a look at the whole entire neighborhood, there's, just like Mr. Ortega stated, there's mobile homes a block and a half. To the east, there's cinder block buildings for commercial use at the end of that block, there's camp trailers and other backyards, so. This is an issue that's not just this one residence, we're gonna be seeing this problem all around that whole neighborhood, if we go after one, we need to make it a. Staple to go after all of them and clean up their properties and take down buildings that are bigger than stated and so that it just opens up a big can of worms. Um, there are some permitting issues and stuff that maybe could be rectified legally, um. But I think we should look at it at, at both the directions and see if something could be worked out to. To keep the facility with, like Baldwin said, uh, with the implication of making sure that it stays a storage building. Um, with that being said, uh, I will abstain from voting on this issue.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. I got a question for Mr. Ortega, um, in the event we do decide to approve this variance. Will you guys be building a fence around the backyard of the property after everything's all said and done?
Absolutely.
Over there, there was no fences or nothing, right?
Yes, yes, we will be building a, a fence and just so, just so the commission's aware, my dad owns the house directly south of that as well.
Hmm.
On Seventh Street. He owns that, that part, that.
Yeah, I was just kind of, I was kind of wondering, once, you know, if, if it's approved, once the fence is up, it'll just look like a, a structure in the backyard, not so much, uh, a trailer house. Once it's underpenned and it's set correctly and a fence is built around it, you'll basically just see the pitched roof. And, and a portion of the walls is all. Um, but that being said, uh, I want to make a motion that we approve the variance. For, uh, but I want to put some stipulations on it. That they will go back through and permit it correctly, the electrical, the plumbing and the, and blocking. And that it will only be used as an accessory building, it will not be inhabited for living.
I have a motion to approve the item, uh, subject to some restrictions that I presume we've noted. Is there a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it to see where the vote goes.
I have a second from Commissioner Baldwin. That is a roll call vote.
I got a question for the attorney real quick, will those stipulations we put in there, will those suffice to keep it?
Y- yeah, I mean, as, and then it always has to be an accessory building and never be occupied, I think that's.
And then, and then also the requirement that they will get the required, because sometimes you can hire a contractor and they don't always. Follow the rules as far as the permitting and that kind of stuff goes, so he may have thought he was getting a permit and blocking permit. But that contractor may or may not have pulled it. So if they go back and get all the required permits and inspections done on the electrical, the plumbing and, and the blocking. I personally don't have an issue with it.
I just would want to, um, hear from Mr. Ortega, if that's okay, if that's something that can be done, if you can go back and get all those permits and I just don't want. You guys to vote on something that he's gonna say, or may say, that's impossible, so I don't want to set it up for it to fail, so I just would like Mr. Ortega to weigh in on that, if he would.
Yes, um, I will. Pull any permit that I, uh, need to, um, to make it, I mean, to make everything right.
And you're in the understanding that you may have to get somebody who's, uh, uh, since that is considered a mobile home, that has the, the mobile home license to pull the permitting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And how long? I'm sorry. And how long? Do we have to do that? Because there has to be a time limit.
Well, the motion.
I don't want to.
Yeah, the motion belongs to Commissioner Riordan, so if you'd like to make the motion with the time limit on it.
I, I really don't want to give them a, a, you know, a hundred percent, because right now permits are taking a while, not so much through the city, but through, through CID with COVID. And all of that, uh, you know, they're taking anywhere better part of thirty days to get permits pulled through the state and then plus the city side of it. Uh, you know. I don't know, maybe you give them ninety days to get it taken care of, that. Does that sound? Reasonable to everybody?
Actually, no.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Sykes.
I, uh, this has been going on since October. And it was on the agenda in January, it was on again in February, I think that, uh. Mr. Ortega understands the fact that the permits had not been pulled. And this could have been in process by the time this meeting was scheduled. I do believe we're setting a precedent.
Yes.
I. I have, I just have a problem with that.
In, in that defense.
Acquiesce and we are going to roll over and go ahead and accept this. Even though it, uh, goes against Commissioner McDonald's idea of how the neighborhood can be preserved or can, it can go forward. Being more uniform, that's pretty much what I got from your comments, Sharon. I, I believe we need to, uh, put some legs on this and either have it happen more quickly, or we need to be voting against it.
Well, my, my reason for the ninety days is just due to the fact that I do this every day, the timeframes, I've got one that's been sitting over at CID for thirty days now. And then it'll have to go to the city for the city's portion of it, probably take two weeks over there. So you know what I mean, and then you'll have to have time to, to coordinate with a contractor that has the mobile home license, it's a special license. That, that they have to have and they pay extra for, so he'll have to coordinate with one of them, get permits pulled through the city. Then shipped off to CID, get those pulled, then get the work performed and then get the inspections, you know, uh, performed. So ninety days isn't really all that unrealistic to get that done.
Okay, I have a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Payne?
Okay, I get it, I understand what you're saying, Josh, uh, Commissioner Riordan, I'm sorry, um. But I do have the same issue, this has been going on, when was that building put in place? When did we say, October?
In their defense, would you want to spend all the money, they're probably looking at a thousand dollars by the time all the permits are done and hiring a contractor, plus the work. I don't know what the work would cost them.
I get it.
To have the, hide and move it, I understand why they haven't spent it yet. So.
I.
That's all I'm saying.
I, I'm sorry, but I don't understand it because it, okay, I don't, I, hold on.
Breaking up.
I don't understand it because it's part of the process, right, you, you have to do this, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, um, it's part of the process, you, you have. Okay, you have to have those permits, like, you have to be permitted, is that correct? I mean, this is something that should have or could have been done. Quite a while ago and here we sit, so I, I guess I don't understand that.
Well, that's like I was saying earlier, they hired a, a gentleman to move it that should have repulled, should have pulled the required permits to block it and move it. And he may or may not done that, they don't know, he can't get a hold of them.
Uh, city attorney, Pateria Bingle say, you had a comment?
I just, uh, this all got really lost in the making of a motion, so. Just clarify the motion for the official minutes and then find if there's still a second and then all the discussion can take place, we can follow Robert's rules, please.
Actually, we already have a motion.
There was a second.
There's a motion and a second, Commissioner Baldwin was the second and Commissioner Riordan.
Yes.
But I just want to clarify, does that motion have a time limit on it, because there was a lot of discussion about that.
I would like to add ninety days to that. That it needs done within ninety days and it's just due to COVID, if it wasn't COVID going on, all the nonsense, I'd shorten the timeframe, but I just know. That right now, it's taking a little bit of time to pull permits.
So is that, are we considering that a, a new proposition and do we have to vote?
No, I'm just adding, I'm just adding the ninety day timeframe into the motion, so he has to get all the required permits for electrical plumbing and.
And I'm assuming that, uh, Commissioner Baldwin would, would have seconded that motion if that had been the case, the original motion, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Is there any further discussion? If not. Will clerk please call the roll, we have a motion and a second.
Asten Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Joshua Arden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Nay.
Dusty Wright.
Thank you.
Susan Payne.
Hang on a second. Nay.
Richard Boss.
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, were you an aye or nay?
I'm a nay.
Okay. He had seen, yes.
We had an extension from my we have
So we've got.
Three ayes and three nays.
Correct, and one extension, yes. So that means it doesn't pass. So it does not pass.
Where do we go from here? City Attorney?
The motion failed. I mean, we're, we're under this item, correct, City Attorney?
Correct. So the motion failed. So the commission has declined to approve the variance. So now, if the zoning doesn't fit and that is not allowed there, then unfortunately, the Ortegas are going to have to deal with that. And of course, you know, Ms. Rial, or even myself, if Mr. Ortega wants to call me, we can discuss next steps and what needs to happen now. But it's a non-conforming building in a zoning district, so we would require it to either come into compliance or be its removal. And Ortega, if you'd like to talk about it, of course, I'm available tomorrow.
Move on them to new business. Item six, consider an act upon ordinance 1627, case Z 2021-0001A, for first publication for a map amendment to change the zoning designation of the property located at 911 Mescalero Street from MH1 manufactured housing subdivision to MH2 manufactured housing park. Or Real will give us some information on that, or Stella?
Okay, I'm going to try and share my slideshow. If not, I'll have Ms. Gutierrez bring it up for me. It's not giving. Okay, Teresa, you're going to have to help me out. It's asking me to sign in somewhere to share it.
Okay, it's this one here.
So we're looking at Z 2021-0001. Thank you. Okay, um, while, while Teresa gets that slideshow up. This property, as Mayor Boss indicated, is located at 911 Mescalero Street. It is a current manufactured housing park. I'm going to give you a little bit of history. I did a lot of research on this one because of the fact that it's been a park since that was annexed into the city. So at the time that was annexed into the city, like I said, it was an existing and operating manufactured housing park with 57 spaces. At this present time, it's zoned MH1, which is manufactured housing subdivision. Throughout my whole research, I could not find any records of when that action was taken. But that's what our zoning map is showing. That's all the information I find is showing that it's zoned MH1 manufactured housing subdivision. But is the incorrect zoning for a manufactured housing park? The correct zoning for the manufactured housing park is MH2. So at this point in time, Mr. and Mrs. Smith are in the process of selling the park and the potential buyer contacted me about moving in homes into this park. And that's when I discovered it wasn't zoned correctly. So it's the perfect opportunity to fix this mistake. So, um, the legal notice on this was published on January 17th of 2021. Twenty-two letters were mailed by certified return receipt mail to all the property owners of record within 200 feet from the property excluding public right of way of the property for which the rezoning is sought. As of February 16, 2021, there have been six letters returned undeliverable. And I have not received any letters or phone calls of opposition. The case was presented to the planning and zoning board on February 4th, 2021. Planning and zoning recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. So at this time, staff recommends approval, next, please, thank you. To accept, staff recommends to accept the findings and facts of as presented in approved zone request case Z 2021-0001A. I'm open for questions. It's pretty simple. I'm, I'm just basically trying to fix it.
Mr. Mayor.
Questions, Commissioner Baldwin?
Uh, no questions if nobody else does. I just make a motion to approve item number six.
I have a motion to approve item six. Do I hear a second?
A second.
A second.
Mayor Protem Sykes, seconded the motion. Will clerk please call the roll?
Jason, Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Joshua Arden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
We'll move on to item seven, consider an act upon case B-2021-001A to allow to continue to have the existing number of spaces, that being 57, within the existing park. Stella, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. If you can help me with the slideshow, Teresa.
Yep, I'm bringing it up.
Okay, so this is the second portion of trying to fix this problem. Like I said before, the, the park was annexed in with existing 57 spaces. Next. So at this time, again, please. One thing I want to bring to your attention is that there have been several, looking back on the history of permitting, Mr. and Mrs. Smith has, have owned this park for many years. And they've always complied with pulling the proper permits, whether it was a blocking permit or there was even permits for foundations or additions, electrical and plumbing for 25-plus years. And no one had ever corrected this issue. Current ordinance indicates that our manufactured housing parks should be no smaller than two acres and should only allow eight manufactured homes per acre. Well, you all, you all are well aware of the fact that when we annex in a piece of property, we annex it in and we accept it as is. So at the time that was annexed in, it was annexed in with 57 spaces. Now that Mr. and Mrs. Smith are in the process of selling this property, if I was to make them comply with current ordinance, it would probably lose about 24 spaces. So the variance is, the request for the variance is to continue to have the existing number of spaces within this manufactured park. I do want you all to be aware that I have spoken to the potential buyer and whether this gentleman purchased the property or it's someone else. I have made it very clear to Mr. and Mrs. Smith and the potential buyer that I will be requesting a park plan because there really isn't a park plan. We need to look at that. That's part of my effort in trying to clean up the areas there in Walker. So at this point in time, I staff recommends approval of accepting the 57 spaces because we approved it as is back in the 60s. So I'm open for questions.
Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I just make a motion to approve item number seven.
A motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve item seven. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Riordan. Will clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Joshua Arden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to item eight. I'm sorry.
I, I was just saying, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the commission and all of the zoning people and stuff for their help in this situation.
I'm not hearing.
He's just saying, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. I, I, I couldn't hear what you were saying. Thank you. We want to item eight, consider an act upon ordinance 1625 for the first publication, authorizing the repeal of ordinance 1439 Housing Authority Authority Advisory Board and create Resident Advisory Board. We have Melissa Ruiz, our Housing Authority Manager, and Evelyn Huff. We have, we have Evelyn here this evening. You have any comments?
Yeah, I'm going to go first. I'm going to go first to give a little bit of background and then Marissa can talk a little bit about.
All right, Evelyn, thank you.
So the Housing Authority Board was created in 2013 because, as some of you may remember, the city commission used to convene separately before the city commission meetings as an authority board. And so we would have a completely separate meeting. The Housing Authority Advisory Board was created so that it could meet in place of the commission. It would approve items and then those items would be taken to the commission for approval. However, HUD changed several of its rules and allowed for the commission as a whole to, to be the governing body of the housing authority. So we have been told many times by HUD that the Housing Advisory Board is not only obsolete, but it is also redundant. And they've made suggestions to us multiple times that to stop doing double work by presenting items to the Housing Authority Board first and then presenting them to the city commission second. The other thing that they've told us multiple times, they would like us to develop a resident advisory board, which would be made up completely of residents from both complexes. That would allow residents to review the five-year plans, the annual plans, some of the capital stuff, so that their input would be received before it came to you all as commission approval. And so over the years, we've had different variations of the Housing Authority Advisory Board. I think one time that we've actually had a full board. And so I'll let Marissa go ahead and talk about kind of where they've been at recently and where they're looking to go with the resident advisory board.
Any discussion? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Marissa, Lewis, you have a comment?
You're muted, Marissa.
Marissa, we're not hearing you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry.
We're not hearing you.
You still can't hear me?
Yes, now we can. Just, thank you.
Evening, everyone. I'm sorry. Um, so in recent months, obviously with COVID, we, we haven't been able to convene for Housing Authority Board meetings. Again, like Evelyn stated before, it, it is redundant. We, we normally can't even get a quorum of, of votes to take anything to the commission. The commissioners are recognized as our, our Housing Authority Board in the eyes of HUD. And so having this resident advisory board, we would have three members of Plaza Hacienda, which is one of our housing authorities properties, and then of Alta Vista. And that would just help bring more community to our residents and feeling like they have a say, they can bring us input. And just kind of taking us in a different direction for the housing authority. Obviously, they would, they would have more input as far as, you know, knowing what's on our five-year plan, some of the projects that are coming of the housing authority. But I mean, we would have a board that would meet and then that we would bring to the commission for voting.
Are you any questions or comments, the ladies?
I guess my only comment, Evelyn and Marissa.
Who's that?
Oh. We've had a difficult time. We've had a difficult time. You, you stated that you've had a difficult time of getting people to be on that board. You can't meet, you can't get a quorum. What will be, what makes you think that the residents will be more enthusiastic about embracing the idea of being on a board where you may be able to finally get a quorum and finally be able to discuss things and vote on them?
I want to, I want to a little bit to that, and then I'll, I'll let Marissa speak. So in the past, our resident advisory board included one resident. We have had residents who have resigned because they felt overwhelmed by the professional people on the board. And so they haven't, they haven't felt like they could talk, or they haven't felt like they could join in because there's someone on the board that's a vice president of a bank. There's someone on the board who's a successful real estate agent. And whereas with a tenant advisory board, they'll definitely feel where, a resident advisory board, they'll definitely feel where they are with their peers. And hopefully then they, because of that, they'll be more willing to, to be involved and feel more comfortable than they would trying to, I mean, we had one person who, when we recombined as the city commission and we had a resident on the board, he didn't want to come because he didn't think he had nice enough shoes to come to the commission meeting. And so what we're hoping is that by just having a completely resident board, that it'll be very non-threatening and they'll be willing to, to give their input in a situation where they feel more comfortable.
Evelyn, can I ask you this? What are other municipalities in New Mexico doing that have housing authorities? What, how are they structuring their or how are they structuring their organizations?
So housing, housing authorities that are departments of the city like we are, they would be, they would have a board, the, the city commission would be their governing board, and then they would have a resident advisory board. And
All, all residents?
Yeah, housing authorities that are standalone or different types of components, they would have their own board that handles everything. So like, even though they are in that city because they're standalone, that board approves their budget, it approves what their executive director gets paid, it does the hiring, it does the firing. The, the city commission at those types of housing authorities has no input. So we're a little different because we are a fully involved department within our city. So that is where you guys become the main authority because we're fully involved with the city.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Evelyn.
I guess, Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Payne?
Yeah, I, I think my only comment is that I think it makes a lot of sense. And I feel like doing something like this gives the residents more buy-in. If they're involved and they get a say in it. So I think it's actually a fabulous idea. Absolutely in support of it.
So are you going to put that into a motion if there's no other comment?
I will. Do we, I didn't know we had to, we do have to vote on that? Okay, so, yes, okay. Well, then I will make a motion that we help me word it, that we
Approve item eight.
Are we dis-
An act upon ordinance 1625.
Yes, I make a motion. For, for first publication.
I have a motion from Commissioner Payne.
I'm in my car, I'm not going to lie, sorry.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner McDonald. Will clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Joshua Arden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright? Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on next, item nine, appointments to boards and committees, and we, I'm gonna go through all of the, uh, boards and committees, even those that are, have not had applications for vacancies. Uh, the airport zoning board has one city vacancy. Uh, we have, I, I, I hope I pronounced this right. Svetlana Ternova has, is interested in being appointed to that position. It would be her first term. I've reviewed the application, and if there is no objection from the commission, I am going to appoint, this person to that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna appoint her to, uh, the airport zoning board. We hear any objection? And she is so appointed. We want to the alma mater of Public Library Board. We have one city vacancy. We have one looking for that position, and Billy Childs is appointed. This is, this will be his first term. I, if there's, I've reviewed, uh, his application, and I'm going to appoint Billy to that board if there's no objection from the commission. Then he is so appointed. Um, Housing Authority Advisory Board, there are two vacancies and no applications have been received. Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council, there is one vacancy. This vacancy is due to the expiring term of social, I, I'll probably pronounce this wrong, Sociedad Valenzuela. There's, there's an individual, she is interested in being reappointed. And there is another individual that's interested, uh, Susan Poor, if appointed, it would be her first term. Uh, I've reviewed both applications, uh, and I've made the decision that I'm going to appoint Susan Poor if there is no objection from the commission. And I would like to thank Ms. Valenzuela for the services that she's given in the past. There's no objection? If anyone is interested in serving on a board or committee, uh, you may apply at the city clerk's office. And I think we can still do that. Can, uh, Teresa, can we still do that online?
Online, yes, sir.
Online or at the clerk's office. Maybe easier now to do it online, which is hope.
Mayor?
I, who's that? Yes, Mayor Protem Sykes.
Based on the fact that we have just passed item number eight, will the citizens of the housing authority have to apply to the, uh, for boards and commissions the same way we're doing now?
Evelyn?
Yes, um, but the, uh, housing authority staff will be able to help them through the application process. We'll have the applications at the housing authority.
Great, thank you, Evelyn.
Oh, if there's, if there's no further business, we'll move into executive session. And item number ten, we'll adjourn into executive session, full session in compliance with N dash fifteen dash one H eight seven in MSA as amended to discuss real property of land around Bonita Lake area, and to discuss threatened or pending litigation, taxation, and revenue department lawsuit, and discuss threatened or pending litigation, Union Pacific Railroad, Eighth Street Crossing. Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Payne to, to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Baldwin. All those in favor, aye?
Mr. Mayor, this is a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is roll call.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Joshua Arden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned into executive.
Okay. Give me a moment. I'm going to turn off the live streaming and the recording and, and, uh, turn the host over to, uh, Petria.